We'll call this meeting order, guys. Everybody stand for the place, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
All right, may have seat. All right, roll call Ms. Connie.
Your favor, Councilman King.
Here.
Councilwoman Fleming.
Here.
Councilman Coon.
Here.
Councilman Florence.
Here.
Town Clerk here. Town Attorney, Mr. Land.
Here.
Item number one, additions, deletions, changes, approval of agenda. I think you said you had one, Ms. Connie?
Yes, I have, actually. Item under item number four, add number 15, please. Garbage assessment for 2324.
Okay.
And on number, under item number four, you will change on number one, Kellen Bailey to Dalton Kirks.
Number one, okay.
And number three will be David Kraus instead of Kevin Kirby.
David Kraus. Okay. Let's need a motion to approve the agenda with changes.
Make a motion to approve the agendas with the changes of item number four, one, three, and the addition of garbage assessment 2324.
Good. All in favor of approving the agenda with the changes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, good. All right, item number two, meeting minutes. Need a motion, get one over the minute for approval of minutes from May 15, 2023.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from May 15, 2023, council meeting.
Second.
All in favor of approving minutes from May 15, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, good. All right, item number three, public participation. Guys, this time we open it up for the public to speak. I will ask you, we have a lot of items on the agenda tonight to get through, so please keep it to agenda items if you can, okay? We've got a lot to get through tonight, so at this time we will open it up. Yes, sir.
It's not on the agenda, I'm sorry, but we're having trouble with dogs killing cats up around the neighborhood.
Okay. You can, you, we'll give you your three minutes on that, so yes, sir, if you want to speak on that, that's fine.
Yeah.
Hold on just a second. Oh, let me go ahead and open it up, then I'll let you come up to the podium, okay? You guys, state your name. Guys, if you will go to the podium, state your name clear and loud, so we can pick it up here on the recorder, but at this time we'll open it up, and you have three minutes, okay? So, yes, or no?
My name is Matt Robinson.
Yes, sir.
Now, I personally know five cats just in local neighborhood right here that got killed by dogs here this last few months, and I've heard of three other ones. My neighbor was having, three of them cats belonged to her. One of them I witnessed as two dogs killed in my backyard. Understand, you have dogs and being well in pets, and I have no problem with that, but you should be responsible for that, because something needs to be done about it, especially before these dogs attack a little child or someone that's close to the school. That's basically all I want to say.
Okay. At this time, it's public participation, so the board's really not going to answer, but I would say we need to get code enforcement involved in it. Right. Code enforcement, we have it interlocal with Lake City, so, and I remember, I remember you calling me, Ms. Connie, and I did speak with the code enforcement, I believe they gave a citation to whoever the dog owner was, so we will work on it, and we'll continue to work on it, so, but we need to reach out to code enforcement, so.
One day last week, another one of her cats got killed.
Oh, really? Okay. Another one, okay. Yeah, and it is becoming a problem. I will agree.
Same. I didn't see them. My wife seen them. It was about 2:00 in the morning, and she heard dogs barking, and she went out there and yelled, and took off on her porch.
Right. And we'll try, and hopefully one day we'll have code enforcement back here in our city, where you have a little bit more touch on it right now, but right now, the code enforcement...
I mean, it's a sad, it's killing some other people's pets, but it's devastating if they attack the child.
Well, that's right.
Because that's close to the school.
Yes, sir. That's definitely. Well, we'll reach out to, I had Ms. Connie make, maybe make a phone call to, it was an animal shelter, who did we call, Ms. Connie, last time?
Animal shelter.
Was it animal shelter that we called?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Code enforcement got a hold of animal control.
Yes, and I spoke with, trying to remember his name now, but his wife, Miss Honor.
Miss Honor.
Miss Honor, that's right. I spoke with her personally, so she kept me kind of updated what was going on, and then they sent me back a message that they did send out a citation for whoever owned the dogs. All right, thank you, sir. I appreciate you, okay? We'll try to stay on top of that for y'all, okay?
Thanks, ma'am.
All right, yes, sir. Next.
My name is Laura Jena.
Good.
Good evening.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ora Edman, and it's, you know, I've been here to have down profit that's here, straight from the heart of North Center of Florida. It's only more so for informational purposes, that we do have a health fair coming up on July 7th, July 8th, we'll be at the community center, and an update on the food, we have reached out, we have one sponsor that's willing to give us, to donate us some food, and just to clarify, we're not trying to duplicate what's already here, which is like the staple food, we're trying sort of something a little more like fresh vegetables and something else. We have partnered with Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A is promising, we've got a couple more people that are promising, you look out for like Starbucks and a couple more people that they have the sandwiches and all those things, and like dip pastries that they're willing to give us, and so we're in the, we're beating the streets, and so we are still looking for people who are willing to partner with us, the city, we're still looking for the city, because we have to have some place to actually do it, so, but we are still progressing along with that project of trying to get food here.
Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you for your update. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I think y'all know me.
Yes, ma'am.
Catherine Terry. I just want to echo what Matt said, but I do know they're not always the same job on dogs, and my neighbor Karen Harold, Karen and Lonnie, on this side of me, have several videos of different dogs.
Oh, right.
Not actually during the kill, he's witnessed during the kill, but it's quite a problem.
Right.
And one of the workers at SNS one morning, this has been several months ago, she was afraid to get out of her car, because dogs were over there being aggressive towards the car, and this was like 5:30 in the morning, you know how they have to open super early? So, I spoke with Laura Hunter, I've spoken to the Humane Society, I haven't spoken with code enforcement, but so far I haven't seen anything done, and I'm not saying that's y'all's fault, I just want to see y'all step up and take some action somewhere, you know, if you can.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll make some phone calls, Ms. Connie, if you can, make a call up there, rattle them a little bit, and see if they, if they can get somebody down here, she is there.
Okay, thank you.
We will, we appreciate it, Ms. Connie.
I will say that code enforcement has to refer to animal control.
Okay. So, they have to say...
So, therefore, animal control is the agency that has the equipment and the manpower in order to do something about needless dogs. Now, I will, I do know that they have not been real aggressive about it in Fort White in the past, I don't know what their situation is, I know they were going through some funding issues, et cetera, et cetera. Perhaps when Mr. Kraus gets up, he can address that, he wouldn't know about the animal control, because the animal, because the county is looking to assist and do something with animal control, beginning in the fall.
Well, what we can do is, is reach back out to them, and just kind of just reemphasize what you said. You said there's been another, there's been another attack since then, since the one that we cited?
I've had five killed, three since I've talked to you.
Okay.
And one just last week.
Do you know who the person is that has the videos?
Karen and Lonnie Harold.
Next door.
Have they reported it to animal control?
I know she has at least once. I have, to the point where I'll probably see him have stalker charges or something.
See if, see if we can get, see if they can get those videos down in Ms. Connie, where we can get them to the animal shelter, and maybe that'll kind of enlighten what's going on, and we'll let them know all the other incidents and stuff, too, okay?
And then I'm just going to throw in, you know, this, all this is random, you can't be out there as a dog catcher on Monday at 5:00 PM and walk up to you, so.
Well, hopefully they'll, they'll start visiting the area a little bit more, and see if they can catch the dog run wild or something, so.
I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, okay? All right, anybody else for public participation before we close it? Okay, at that time, we'll close the public participation, we'll move, yes, sir.
My question is, am I on the agenda of that?
Yes.
This is your option. All right, so, item number four, new business, would be number one, would be Dalton Kirks, Jordan Street shortfall.
I'm speaking in place of Kellen Bailey today. The Jordan Street resurfacing project is getting paid for with a SCOT grant. When the grant was originally let, materials weren't as high as cost they are now, with the materials ballooned out the way they did, you guys are basically looking at a $60,000 shortfall to pave Jordan Street from US 27 out to the current limits of Tyrus Way. There's two options here. You guys will need to write to the county, I believe specifically to you, Mr. Kraus, and let them know how much of that $60,000 the town can cover. The county has shown the limits in the past to help you guys out with those shortfalls. If that is not an option, to calm the ground, we can't even met, we can shorten the project limits to Emile Court, if you have any, pass that down, take each one of them. That's basically shorting the job by 400 feet, removes enough material to bring it back on the budget where it needs to be, so, that is...
It's going to stop here.
You're saying it's going to stop at Emile Court?
Correct. If we can't meet that $60,000 shortfall, we just shorten the project limits, because that doesn't stand back now, we're paying the points for 7 miles, and that would just basically be 0.3 miles, so we're losing 700s of a mile off of there 400 feet.
Where was it going to stop, down at...
Tyrus.
See, all right, so, man, I got glasses on, still can't see, that's just...
Just past Tyrus.
Okay, so that's it, okay. That's what I thought it said, we couldn't tell, okay? People won't be happy about that, will they?
Will it help you?
Can we use the bathroom really quick? I'm sorry to interrupt your meeting.
But we're right in the middle of a public meeting, you're going to have to, yeah, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
They have mushrooms over there.
Okay. I didn't realize it was just in this meeting, I'm sorry. I didn't realize it was right in this room, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
They got beaten games, though. Man gonna bust up in the public meeting, laughing. Okay, so we're back. All right, so we're back. Any thoughts, guys? I mean, uh... And, well, there's no way to go after any more grants for those projects?
DOT's cracked down pretty hard on going on the budget on these types of things, and asking for money after the fact. They've made it very clear that you need to cover this upfront, or provide a bid option, and the bid option is just not paving that full amount, scaling it back towards within budget.
When was this approved? Yeah.
It was quite a while before, before COVID.
Yeah. You know, they, they would go on their five-year work plans. So, it was probably five years ago.
So, they put us on a five-year work plan, by the time our time comes back up, the tier will fill up, and now we're stuck.
Well, usually, we anticipate the, they put in a cost increase when they're doing the bids to DOT, do you not?
No, we normally don't put a cost increase in there, it's, every single city and town, county, is running into this issue right now. We went from $100 a ton to 170 ton per asphalt, all the base material, everything involved with roadway construction has gone up. This is just kind of the issue we're having, and DOT's kind of ran out of...
Protection in general.
Ran out of patience for other...
Well, Kellen indicated to me that when they do those five years in advance, that they do, they take the current rate, and they do try to add a little in there, knowing that it's probably going to go up, but this was much greater increases than normal.
Because it was pretty...
By 10%, it's not a, once you start hitting north of about 20% cost increase.
Right.
And we specifically cannot submit this to DOT unless we give you bid options, and the bid option's always going to be, what can you take out of the job to get it back on our costs, and they'll just make us go that route, or...
And forgive me, DOT was the only one that was...
They don't get bid out to regular contractors coming up here, no part of that, Anderson Company, yeah, somebody like that. It'll be a private company that gets the job, they just have to have, see the budget that we provide them, then when you get bid, you have to be in the bid process, and it has to be on that amount.
If the board is okay with it, why don't we write a letter to the county, see if they'll, see if they'll help, if they don't, then we'll go back to square one, we'll, at that point, we'll make a determination whether to cut it or what to do at the next meeting. Y'all okay with that? We'll get, we'll, we'll write a letter, and just see if the county will help, if they don't, then we'll come back and revisit it.
Kellen will be in touch with you, all right, so.
All right, good. Uh, number two, which is, what, what, who was taking that? Ricky Hendrix?
Yeah, I couldn't find a sub like they did, I'm not serious.
You couldn't find what now?
A sub.
Oh, a sub, I got you. We got a bathroom.
I'm just going to pass a couple of handouts, just to follow, help you follow along, in addition to what Connie already had in the agenda packet.
I flood me some of these papers, I get peed on one piece of paper.
Hi, Ricky Hendrix, I'm also here with North Florida Professional Services, just here to bring you some project updates on utility projects that will affect the town. I got two that I wanted to speak about. Your first sheet there, the large legal, the capor size, is just to show you the extent of a 12-inch potable water main that will be supplementing the well supply at your water plant. Extending all the way from Ellisville down 41 across 18, sneaking its way through town up to your water plant. The intent of the project, the intent of the project is to provide a supplemental source for the wells, which we know are temperamental, and provide some better water quality. The project is out to bid currently, bid date is July 18th. We're hoping to get a good response, and I know there's some contractors that the county's specifically reaching out to make sure they're aware of the project, as well as those who normally get notified. Call goes smoothly with the bid and the, you know, award, evaluation award, and then we're looking at probably a nine or 10-month construction period, so, given the bid period, and when a contractor could be expected to start rolling, we expect the project could be finally complete next summer, probably around July 2024.
Then next summer?
Maybe, maybe June, June or, June probably, year going now.
Oh, wow.
Yes, sir.
I know when we first started, we were talking about the completion being this summer.
Yeah, we got, it's gotten bogged down a little bit, and we've worked through some of that. We added some facilities that need some design. One of the features that you'll notice on one of their sheets, the first sheet, I believe, in the middle of the project area, chlorine booster station, just to help supplement the residual chlorine, which will probably start tapering off, depending, of course, on what it started at, and how long it takes to traverse that 10-mile, 9.9 or whatever mile route. And, you know, the county has pre-purchased a lot of the materials for this, so we're hoping the contractor can get, get started pretty quickly on the linear portion of it, and the directional boards. This will be a, this will be bid as a HDPE, high-density polyethylene pipe system, requires the joint wells, so he'll, he'll have to be, have a qualified welder to work with, but it's becoming more and more popular, we've had some good success with it.
I missed the last regional utility meeting, but I thought that the last one that we were at, last, maybe I misunderstood, but they said it was going to be finished by September, October.
I think, well...
Unless I misunderstood that, did you, did you, you remember that, that meeting? No? I remember, I remember Mr. Ford asking the question about when do we think we will complete the project, I believe Ms. Kirby, who, I know Stacy was there also, and I thought they were thinking September, October, we'd be complete, pleaded with the project.
I have to go back and look at the...
But now, we're talking about a whole nother, Lord, I mean, this thing has been drug out, really, okay?
When did you say this would be due?
July 18th.
Yeah.
July 18th, well, you'll get them back?
That's when the bid, that's when the contractors have...
So, this, that's this July, or next?
This July.
This July, okay, okay.
Basically, a month from now.
The bids will be awarded.
Right.
Well, they'll be, they'll be received, but it might take, I don't know how long it'll take to get around to award, and then to notice to proceed and all that, so we're allowing a few months there for some of that to play out, and we're expecting the project to be done by June-ish. And from what we can tell, the cost of the project is still pretty close to where it was, considering the county has pre-purchased about $1 million worth of pipe fittings and valves and hydrants and such. So, overall, it's going to be about, close to a $6 million project.
I know we got, we got the grant, 21. All righty, you said it's going to be close to six, six maybe, you said? Yeah. I knew we, they were projecting five something, so, okay. All right.
Was this, was there any due to untimely?
A big part, I guess, yes. And so, I will say, on that note, that just a few weeks ago, we hired another engineer, a water resource engineer, he's going to kind of take over heading up the department, he's got more experience than me, maybe a little, not as much as Bob, but then Bob was sort of a unicorn, be hard to find a good replacement, perfect replacement for him, but, but anyway, this fellow, he's got experience with, I think, a lot of experience from DEA, from Jacksonville area, I think also some from Orlando Utilities, so he's got, he's got some large utility experience, so we're hoping that that's kind of streamlined a lot of these projects that have gotten bogged down a little bit, this being one of them. Any other questions about the water line? The last handout there, the small letter size, just gives you basically an outline of what's involved in the first phase of the proposed wastewater collection and treatment system. This is the one that we got a, y'all got a $5.3 million wastewater grant through DEP for Phase 1, so that's going to basically include, just to describe the project real briefly, it's going to basically pick up areas along the north and south of US 27, right as it goes through town. You see sort of a red dashed outline of the service area that will be covered by the first phase of the collection system. That'll include three proposed lift stations, and a force main, collecting all of that and heading south down 47 to the 95 acre parcels, that, the two parcels that total 95 acres, for the gun range, and I guess old landfill was, so, and that, all that came out of the feasibility study and facilities plan that Bob had worked on so hard over the last year or two.
Ricky?
The option, the other option at one point, of course, was the long catalog property, but...
Right.
Which still may be needed at some point in the future, as the system grows and expands out towards Three Rivers Estates, but it's a lot more, having on the property, I'm sure is the big reason, it's a lot more feasible to utilize that. Yes, ma'am?
Why does the line go around this parcel here and these two parcels here, instead of just going straight across?
Because the, those parcels border the, I'm not, that one I'm sure...
Because this is the church of God right here.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is the residence right here, and this is the vacant, these two here are private.
So, that kind of, that kind of input is what we're going to be looking, we're going to turn in a 30% design set of documents, and that's something that we can specifically look at at that time, and if it's feasible to run laterals from those properties to reach the nearest gravity mains or manholes, then we can certainly do that, but I think our first putt was just to pick up the ones that actually were contiguous or border those, those gravity main routes, so that we could get easy access with short service levels. But it may be feasible to, to run, and it may take an easement across the other fellow's property, I don't know.
Well, you're going down Ulan, so I would assume you could continue to go down Ulan, because you join up to Ulan again right here.
Okay, so...
Right here.
Well, these green, these greens dashes here are the gravity mains, and the solid green is the force mains, so we're all on...
Oh, I see. So, what you're saying is there are people in front of these, and that's why?
That's right.
I got you, okay.
I might say it's impossible, and it'd be a good conversation to have, we'd love to pick up as many as we can, because the more you pick up, the more flow you have to start.
The other properties go all the way through to Ulan, is what you're saying, the other, these are split. There's a property in front and one in back. Yeah, I can see that.
But probably, yes.
All right.
So, what I, what I show there is, is like I say, the starter collection system, the Phase 2, which y'all also have a pending grant for, I think for 4.5 million, that'll pick up and add more to that collection system than what's in that red outline at the top of your paper there, so it'll pick up some more areas to the north of that service area, and also probably to the east and south, heading along the east side of US 27 as it turns more south. But that, that's all Phase 2, but anyways, it's, we're trying to design the Phase 1 flexible enough to accommodate Phase 2, because in some cases, we'll either have to tie into the force mains, or we may have to pump into another gravity system, or into, directly to a lift station, in order to repump, so we're trying to kind of anticipate some of that, just to make, make it easier going forward. When we're fixing, we're wrapping up a 30% design submittable, as per our scope of work. I'm hoping to have that in by the end of next week, and then we can, y'all can have some time to review it, and then we'll all have a sit-down, whoever... some time to review it, and then we'll all have a sit-down, whoever's involved, I don't know who needs to be, but just to make sure that we're, we're good with the things that we're proposing for this Phase One. For example, there's going to be some land acquisition needed, and we'll try to think about that as we, as we identify some parcels that might be needed for, for the lift station particularly, or at least easements across properties for the utilities, for the underground utilities. And we'll talk about more about that at that time. We'll have an updated cost estimate as well, the grant, as you noted, for 5.3 million. And without getting ahead of myself, I'm a little concerned that even, and I tried to just kind of scale back some things a little bit on the collection from what we had initially presented, I guess, after the, during the feasibility study to DEP, to keep it within that ballpark, but considering some of the more recent pricing that we've seen, for materials especially, and like Dalton said, for asphalt, I got a feeling that what you're looking at might even be more than the 5.3, and we'll have to, because another thing we can discuss is how to approach DEP to see if we need to scale the project back somehow, or if they could permit us to utilize part of the Phase Two funding to finish out Phase One, and then apply the remainder to Phase Two. I don't know where that's going to fall exactly, but, but I just want to kind of give you a heads up that, that in the year and a half since the initial preliminary estimates were, were done, maybe not completely a year and a half, but a lot of changes, you know, it's been, it's been kind of crazy.
So what's, what kind of a date we got going for this to happen?
Well, I was just sitting.
With the design phase.
Yeah, I was just sitting there thinking, well, I hope to have the 30% documents into y'all by the end of next week sometime, so we'll give you a better projection on the remaining schedule at that time.
Because, yeah, I'm sure you know, everybody's asking.
I was just sitting there thinking, when Dalton was talking, I was just sitting there thinking about the original end date and the, the DEP's contract agreement dates, and I failed to look them up and jot them down before I came this morning, this evening, so.
December 26.
Of?
December 2026.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Must be done.
I thought you meant the day after Christmas.
No.
December.
December 2026 has to be finished.
So I don't see a problem with that.
That's three, Phase One.
It's three and a half years away.
No, that's Phase, Phase One, that's Phase One and Phase Two.
And Phase Two.
That's the paperwork I got off my computer today from Hannah.
The Phase Two, that's just, was, was awarded or?
Yep. That's what she's saying.
Okay. Well.
Crank it up.
I'm telling you.
That's in Phase One, sounds like.
That new guy that we got, he's in trouble, and he's going to have to.
Crank it up.
Let him up his hopper.
Crank it up.
We're going to let his hopper up.
So this water and sewage has all been delayed over this one gentleman, Bob?
Well, this.
From when I was told this was, you know, 2024, we would have all this down here. Sewages and water.
The water, yes.
Water.
The sewer, I gotta, I gotta go back and look and see, by the time we finish the design permitting and get it built, it's going to be, you know, at least a year and a half from now, so you're looking by, what, the end of '25? No, the end of '24, maybe end of '25, I'm not sure.
You're saying to have the sewer completed?
Well, I'm, I'm nervous putting it out there right now, because I, I have, I have to go back and, and look at what we've already stated, you know, to the, to the, to the funding agency or to y'all, but if we can have this design basically wrapped up by the end of the year, and then it takes even a year and a half to bid, then that puts you into early, mid-'26, I guess? No, '25, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, '26.
This is what I got today.
This is from Hannah.
Yeah. She's referencing that grant number, which is the second phase, and then, before December 31st, 2026.
And that's also the date on the Phase One.
No, this is on the Phase Two, I don't remember about the Phase One. I'm talking about Phase Two is December 2026. So one has to be before that. So I'm, I'm, my, my memory concerns, '25.
Is there anything, is there anything to assure that it's getting sped up? I mean, guess what? I guess the concern up here is kind of what has happened with Jordan Street, kind of what's happened, and we ain't careful what's going to happen with the water, is that we keep on delaying, prices are going to continue going up. I mean, so we know things ain't dropping right now, so, I mean, it's.
Not dropping.
It's kind of a way to happen, because I feel like this kind of got put on the, especially with the water, we've been saying water now, we've been talking about water. I think we got the Grant 21, and we, that was supposed to be a year project, year and a half project.
I don't know, the September date you mentioned, I don't recall that, I mean.
I want to say that was what was said in the regional utility meeting, I believe.
I just remember there was a time when Bob was tossing around the January, February timeframe.
Now, this was after, the, the meeting I'm talking about was after Mr. Bobby just passed away.
You mean just last month?
Yeah, well, the month before, I missed this month, when it was the month before that, right.
Maybe May 5th or whatever.
Right, yeah, that was the meeting we were in, and I remember, because we were hammering the water, how much longer is it going to take, you know, we're going to start breaking ground, we're going to see, you know, people busy running water lines, and it was, I thought they said September, October, now, if I didn't mean, Megan, was you there at that meeting?
I just don't remember.
Okay, I could have swore that September, October was the deadline.
What you find out, it might be in my notes, or it might be on the.
Right. It just keeps seeming like, and I know I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but it just seems like it keeps getting pushed back, you know, another six months, another six months, I'm like, how soon, how, when can we get this finished and completed, so, but, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, find out if you can, find out the day of that sewer, what you're, you're expecting. But like Ms. Connie said, we definitely got to have it done before December 26.
Well, any of this done, and apparently also the next, but of course, that won't be nearly as much, because it's just going to be an extension of the collection system. So it won't involve the water plant, excuse me, the wastewater plant, won't involve the spray field, won't involve the trunk force main, so it should be a lot easier design, and we've already got a survey for some of it, not all of it. But we'll cross that bridge, but I'll try to give you, with a 30% submittal, I'll try to give you an update on, on the Phase One milestones to completion, as well as, to the extent I can, Phase Two. But it hasn't even been really designed yet, it's just been conceptualized, really, so. But we kind of know what we have to work with, right?
Right.
Both physically as well as financially.
Right.
And maybe by then, we'll have some conversations, but we'll talk to you first, before we go to the district about, or to the, to the department about, can swap anything around.
Do you? You want questions?
Questions?
Questions? Ricky, thank you so much, sir, appreciate you coming down. Okay. All right, out of number three, which is Mr. David Kraus, Fort White High School Sewer Plant. It's my solve-up problem right here.
Thank you for having me today.
Yes, sir.
I know you're disappointed I'm not Kevin Kirby, but.
No, we, we like you just fine.
This item is kind of related to what you just finished talking about. The school district is in constant conversations with us about different projects that they want. One of the things the school district would love to do is get out of the sewer business. And so they've been talking to Chad Williams and Stacy and Mike Knoll about possibly the Fort White Sewer Plant, and we've heard that there are grocery stores that would love to come if you had sewer. And so the question is, you know, is the town interested in having us acquire the Fort White Sewer Plant from the school system? They would become a customer of the system, and then you could go ahead and run lines, maybe go ahead and speed up the process of getting retail and commercial grocery stores or whatever started sooner, and then, once the sewer plant is in place and the lines get close enough, it could be converted to a pump station, and then everything would flow ultimately to your wastewater treatment plant. But before we go too far down that road, we wanted to know what the town wanted to do.
What, I've, I've talked to Mr. Gaylord, because I knew this was coming, so my question is, is why could, the funds that we've received for the sewer project, could we rebuild with that to start with? Use that for our starting point? It's, it's just hit me when, when you were just talking. So the funds we receive for sewer.
Right.
The 5.3 million.
Right. Could we use that to facilitate that, what you're talking about, and start the process of running the lines, utilize that money to start it? And my next question to you was, I've already thought about this, I, I mean, I know the board might not know anything about it, but I've talked to Mr. Gaylord, I think Ms. Kirby, or Mr. Kirby called Ms. Connie, so we already kind of knew this was coming. What I would oppose or suggest was, is that the school, because it's inside the city limits, wants board's approval, of them giving us the sewer plant, and we can do, kind of like we did with the water plant and everything else, do it in a local with the county to run it, if that's what the board chooses to do, but I would rather have it, because this is here in the city, it'd be put in our name, but that was my question to you, I didn't know if you would knew that or not, if we could use those funds to fire this thing up quickly.
So.
To go in and get the water line.
That would be a question between you and the granting agency.
Right.
I couldn't tell you what the granting agency would approve or would not approve. The problem is, if you do that, then you're going to short-build in your sewer plant, whereas if we do it the other way, you could have your sewer plant and do this at the same time.
Whereas the funds going to come out to start running that, the, the lines and everything out of this, the plant here, I mean, to get us, you know, because if, if that's going to be the case, we're going to take that sewer plant over, then that is going to take the place of what you've got on this piece, what we've just got on this paper, because the lines are going to come out there, right? I mean, we're going to take lines out of there and produce them down streets to go ahead and supply grocery stores or whatever. So that would be a quick fix, because we're talking about four or five years down the road, or '26. This could be something that, this, well, we could speed up everything. But I guess my question would be, is if we did it that way, then wouldn't those lines that we're running kind of take the place of these lines and sort, you see, so example?
He would have some of the line.
Yeah, when you would have to redesign, we would, we would have to redesign this phase then, because this would over, this would override this phase, we'd have to do it on the delay.
Biggest obstacle will be capacity of the plant, that school district, and not having any ability to expand it.
Right, right.
So you probably would want it in addition to this plant, rather than in lieu of this plant.
Right.
Because that cannot be expanded, I mean, it's, it is what it is, it's school property, they do have capacity, but not a lot of capacity, and I don't know if the capacity would be enough to service.
Right.
So what's the county, what's her, what, I guess, where do you bring it to the table, or?
Well, they brought it to us because they have three other sewer systems, not in Fort White, that they want the county to look at.
Right.
One in Columbia City, one at West Side, one at, off of Burley Road, I guess that is West Side, one at Pine Mount. So they're, we're trying to see if we can break it into separate issues, or if they're going to do it all as one package. You know, the other thing is, they, they feel if they don't get out of the business, then why get out of the business at all? If they still have to maintain sewer plants, they still have to have licensed operators and maintenance, they might as well keep them all. But if they get rid of all of them, and of course, the county doesn't necessarily want all of them, we're trying to convince them to give it into the city, but that's a whole nother story. So we're kind of facilitating the conversation with the, with the school district.
So the school's using that plant to capacity, is that what you said?
No. They have, they're using about a third of the capacity, but it does not have the capacity save this plant that you're building.
Obviously, yeah.
So, you know, you could add maybe one or two grocery stores to that plant, and it'll be a capacity.
Okay.
But, once this plant is built, you would just run a line from that plant.
I understand the process.
Into the gravity mains.
What would you, so, yeah, what would you do with that plant, then?
It would become a giant pump station, so that you could run lines further out to that pump station, and then it pump to your other system.
Got you.
But your biggest issue is, it is not a very big plant, and it has seasonal fluctuations.
Well, right, here's the thing, even, but here's the thought process, which Kraus, if we take it over the, with the time that it takes to do stuff anymore, to get them lines out of that school to run, say, say that grocery store is wanting to go, I don't know, somewhere, two miles from here. By the time you run a pipe out of that school, two, two miles to them, and let's get all the plans turned in and everything done, you're, well, have a new plan up and running. Realistically, I mean, I, I mean, I'm just saying, because we hadn't even started on running, you know, plans on that to get it out, so, I mean, what would be the?
The benefit.
Yeah, what would be the benefit, I guess, well, I mean, if you.
You could start working with developers to bring in a grocery store tomorrow, if you knew you had a sewer plant.
And require them to hook in.
They would be required to hook in, yes.
And they'd be required to run the line to hook into it.
Well, at one point, the property was right across the street.
Twenty years ago, that didn't happen, right?
I guess my question. I heard a couple different, I heard a couple different grocery stores are interested. I personally don't know if anybody's interested.
Before, before we start.
This has been talked about for years and years and years, and so, you know.
Yeah, before we start chasing this rapid, what, is the county willing to take on, I mean, because like you said, what's the benefit here?
So what are we talking about? What are we doing?
Yeah, what would be the, what would be the benefit of the county to take that on, if we're only talking about?
So that goes back to our interlocal agreements, if you're going to have the county run the utility for the town, both water and sewer, you know, that would be a, a generator for the sewer system.
Right.
Plain and simple.
I would, that would need to look into, I mean, if it's, we need to sort of, you know, my, my process of when I started hearing about this, man, we can start with this and just start branching out off this thing while we're waiting on this other thing to come.
You could use the funds to do that.
So, but now that you said that, if that's not, the capacity's not going to hold what we need, then it's, that's really chasing, that's not really.
Yeah, but like you just said, if you get a grocery store here, pretty quick.
Well, you could, I mean, that's, that's the thing, so, and I'm, I'm okay with that, if that's the approach.
Because at one point, they were wanting to go in across the street from the school.
Well, it's Hitchcock's, they own that, right, so, yeah.
And that's still a possibility, it would be a short run.
So to answer your question, I, if board is okay with it, I would say, yes, I'm in agreeance with it, I hope y'all are, that we do pursue that. I wouldn't like to see that, though, if we do pursue it, and we're going to do it interlocal with the county to run it, like we've been doing with the water and everything else, but they do put it in Fort White's name, because it's in the city of White, I mean, it's in the city of White, so.
Well, and if you're going to order the sewer plant, it only makes sense.
Right, sure.
That all of the, all of the components of that sewer system are in.
Well, that's exactly right, because I don't want this up here to be on by us, but that over there is on by, I mean, it just on, yeah.
It wouldn't make sense if the county go in a pump station and pumps it to the town facility.
Makes more sense, so, yes, sir.
Yeah.
All right, so, yeah.
So the school, the school is using a third of the capacity?
That's the station, yes.
And I've heard that same thing, I think, I think somebody.
Something like two-thirds, so it would hold more than, I mean, that school in the daytime is a pile of flesh.
And in the summertime, it's a lot more capacity.
So it would, how would you figure out, like, buildings, if you had, started adding stuff to it, how would you figure out the capacity?
Engineer?
Different businesses would require a different capacity, it would depend on what business it was.
So they calculate based on the number of toilets and sinks?
Yeah.
You know, unless you've got something that has a process, if it's all domestic, it's going to be calculated, just like in your building codes, by the number of toilets and sinks?
Well, you could use that just for businesses, don't try to hook any residential up on it, just strictly for business, you know, businesses.
Well, a restaurant would use more.
Or restaurant business, right, right.
Probably wouldn't necessarily want a restaurant, although you could, because then you got to worry about fats, oils, and greases.
That's true.
Yeah. You're made in there, but you got, I have an 88 on the north.
But I can bring Stacy, you can talk about all that if you want.
I mean, I'm, we're, are y'all interested?
I am.
I'm very interested, so, yeah, I think that, I think that's a good, I think that would be a good approach for, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so.
Ricky, we just want to approach it without.
No, we're all, like I said, I spoke to Mr. Gaylord already, and, you know, we, we talked about that and the, and the fourth.
Right.
So the bozo, so, but, yeah, so, yeah, I mean.
We can talk about that as well, if you want.
I'd love to, so, yes, yes. I'd love to, so, yes, yes, yeah.
So, because I know their intention for the fourth was, it would be for the town and sheriff and the tax collector.
Right.
All that stuff to replace these, to give you adequate space.
And I know he says, whether it was me and you talking about it, or whether it was Mr. Gaylord I was talking to, that said the playground right beside it, they were going to give that with it.
Yes.
So that way we could turn that into a parking, so...
You've got a road that runs right through the middle of it.
Right. Well, we, we talked about, on the phone, Mr. Gaylord mentioned us, they wanted, they kind of wanted to close that road, because running right through the center of their property, it's kind of a useless road anyway. So now everybody would, because they already own that other property, where the little ball field, the old football field is, and the little...
Nursery.
Whatever it is, yeah.
They got a lot of right-of-way issues out there.
So it would just go around their property, just cut that road off to the center of school anyway, so, they just kind of fence around it.
That's another one, if the town feels strongly that they want ultimately to be in the town's name, we can work on that as well.
Yeah, I definitely would like, I think we'd see a lot of older people here in this town be really upset if that guy take, you know what I'm saying, so, yeah, I think that definitely needs to be listed in Fort White's name, so, yeah, the fourth, so, yeah, a lot of people went to school here, or went to school there, back in the day, so, yeah. But, yeah, we definitely need to address that if we can, most definitely.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
So anybody we should be communicating with, just Connie?
Just Ms. Conne, you know, yeah, Ms. Conne, and if y'all can keep us up to date, you're going to try to bring Stacy back with you on the next one, talk about the sewer, okay?
So it wasn't a holiday, he'd be here today?
Okay, good deal, good deal. Sounds good. Mr. Kraus, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's move right along, guys, number four, Lynn, this is renewal of gun, gun club lease, and that was under Mr. Lindsey, so...
Okay, so the council asked me to take a look at the gun club lease, and the amendments that have been made over the years, as it's coming up for renewal in July. Here are my observations and suggestions. The original lease was done some number of years ago, there have been several amendments over time, they all relate back to the original lease, though, the amendments have been done, just been minor changes. The issues that you guys brought up at the last meeting, and that I looked at and addressed, the first is, the way it's set up now would be that the gun club has an option to renew three additional ten-year leases, so they have an option to renew it for the next thirty years, because it goes up. Well, at the same time, the, the original lease allows for the council to terminate the lease anytime thirty days notice. So that sounds like, oh, you have thirty years, but really, it's, it's pretty much...
Month to month.
It's month to month, it is terminated at, at the end. So that's something the council needs to have within their knowledge, to understand that they're not locked in any type of agreement. The second issue was about days and hours that the club operated. In the amendments that were set out through the years, there was an addition that not only during funerals, there wouldn't be any activity, but also that anytime a church was in session. So typically, churches, you know, operate Sunday morning, Sunday evening, Wednesday evening, although I guess, you know, if you're Seventh Day in Venice, they'd be on Saturday. So there wasn't, there wasn't a clear, or if you're Catholic, you have church every day. I don't know if there's a Catholic church here, but, anyway, it wasn't specifically cleared out, but it said, hey, if there's church in session, there's not supposed to be gunfire taken on, which I would, I would generally assume to be Sunday morning, Sunday evening. And, and so, that exists. The, the one thing that is not in there, I think, Mr. Mayor, that you discussed, was a time, you know, a stopping time.
Right.
So that's not in the lease, or in any of the amendments that's been in over the years, of a, you know, an hour of the day.
Takes you at home.
So, so that's something you guys may want to consider during their renewal period. And the only other thing that I noticed, that I would bring to the attention, because there was a discussion about membership, the original lease indicated that there would not be a fee for the use of a gun club, although I do believe, I heard you guys say they do make some manner of payment, or donation.
Donations.
That there would not be, because it was for the public use. So if, as it's being operated since then, it is a membership, paid membership type of thing, I don't know that it would be operating in conformance with what the original lease intended, which would be for public use. That would be for, if I were a citizen of Fort White, and I wanted to go to the Fort White Gun Club and use it, because it's owned by the town of Fort White, I should be able to do so. I don't know if it's being operated that way, because I don't, I'm just not familiar with the daily operation of Fort White Gun Club. But if you read the original lease, it does read that it's set up to be operated as sort of a, you know, it's all business that you guys have leased it to, and it's something that Ms. Conne and I talked about briefly. Again, as you know, I'm going to say this probably for next year, until I get to know everyone better, know all the things better, I don't have a lot of institutional knowledge of some of the things here. You can enter into an agreement with a private organization that says, hey, we're going to, the best use of this property is to lease it to this organization, and they're going to charge money if you want to go and use it, but that money comes to the town of Fort White, and we use it to spend on things, that's, that's done in lots of municipalities, counties, et cetera. In this, in this agreement, that's not the case. Basically, they have use of it, and they are charging people for a fee to use it, I don't know if it's a nominal fee, or a fee to cover their expenses, or however that's done, but it's not been negotiated between the club and the town, and it's, it's not what was contemplated in the original agreement. So that's my evaluation.
It's a lot.
I can answer some of the questions for you.
Let the board, let the board, we'll meet you up just a second, okay, let's, let the board. Does y'all have any other questions, Mr. Lindsey?
Well, I'd like to hear something.
Come on up, come on up to the podium.
He's fixing to answer some of the questions we're going to probably ask.
Well, for the past twenty years, I've been, I've been president of the club, and we are, we are a not-for-profit organization, been approved by the state as not-for-profit. And we do charge a fee, but that fee goes to pay for reimbursing the club, I mean, refurbishing the club, and keeping upkeep of the club, and stuff like that. And as far as, we don't pay the club, or pay the town money, but what we do is, every year since I've been the president, we've donated to the, to the town of Fort White a thousand dollars a year mostly, and in many years, much more than that. Like, the one year, for instance, after the town bought the train depot, my son and I did the work, the club paid for materials and labor and everything, and it amounted over three thousand dollars. We did the floor repair, the back steps, the whole deck, and everything like that, and it came to over three thousand dollars worth of material and laborers. And I come in that year, and I said, well, look, I'm not giving you a thousand dollars, here's, here's the receipts for three thousand dollars, and, you know, so this is like three years' worth of donations. We took one year off, and then the next year, we started paying again, or, you know, giving a donation again. And when we first started doing the donation, the mayor was Truitt Jewer, I believe, and he said, well, you know, we need you to designate what you want us to use the money for. You know, I'm saying, well, you know, I don't know what you want to use it for, you know, so the first year, we said, well, you know, use it for, you know, anything to use to help the youth of the town, you know, ball cords or whatever, something like that, okay. The next year, we said, well, use it for something for the seniors around town. And then, you know, after a few years, we just said, use it for anything to help the citizens of the town. And then like one year, when Truitt was, he was still there, but he wasn't really mayor, he had, Demetri was more or less running before he became mayor, but he was still filling in for Truitt. And the fence along, all the way along the club property and that, actually, the fence was holding the post up, more than the post was holding the fence up, and I called Demetri up, and I said, Demetri, this is your fence, but it's, you know, it's benefiting us and you, I said, I need permission from you to replace this fence. And he said, Kenny, we don't have the insurance to cover, you know, liability insurance for that, and I says, Demetri, I'm not going out to replace that fence, I'm going to hire somebody to do it, and they will have liability insurance, you got my permission. So replacing that fence all the way along there, which it still looks really good, was four thousand dollars that year, we covered the whole thing. We have never cost this town any money. We've always brought money into town, when we have events and stuff like that, we've brought business into town. I don't think you have a business in this town that is, that is profited the town any more than we have, since we've been here, and cost the town nothing. We've just used, what money we can bring in is just going back into the club to build it up and make it, you know, a more family-friendly club. As far as paying the town, no, we haven't paid the town, other than the donation we did.
Mr. Gaylord, let me ask you a question, what are you building up out there? You keep saying you're building up and putting it back into the club, what are you, when you say that, what are you building up and putting back in?
I could tell you, but you wouldn't believe, you wouldn't appreciate it unless you went out there and saw it. We've got a sporting, sporting plays area, that has a high house, low house, quail tower, we've got, what is it, one trap, I'm trying to think what it is, there's only a few of them in the state, I think, that throws the, the...
Skeets?
A wall trap. It's on a, it's on a trailer, and you can't see from the back of it where it's going to throw, it's continuously turning, and it can throw clays anywhere in an area from like here to here, and shooter don't know, and matter of fact, the one operator don't know where it's going to throw it, and the shooter says, pull, the guy hits a button, and it's going to throw a clay. You don't know where it's going to throw it, and while it's going around like this, it's also going like this, so you don't know where or what angle it's going to throw it at. And, you know, it keeps you on your toes, it's to teach people how to shoot different types of birds and that.
How many members did you say you had?
We're not, we're restricted to five hundred memberships. Now, a membership can be me, and in my case, it's me and my wife, but it can be a member, a single member, it can be a family membership, which with us, a family is member and spouse, and it can be a member and three kids, a member and spouse and three kids. So it can be, you know, normally, when we're at five hundred memberships, we have anywhere from seven to nine hundred members.
So five hundred paying memberships, and that's one person, that's how much money?
A single membership is, well, we finally had to raise it after twenty, twenty-something years, we had to raise it from sixty-five to seventy-five dollars. But we have to hire a local man around here that mows the field and stuff like that, and...
So be you charged for the events that y'all have?
We have events.
So that's...
Most of's three to five dollars for an event. They have, we have an annual cowboy action event, now that costs them more money, because they have big prizes to give out and everything, but our monthly events, they're normally like, well, like, tomorrow, we have an event, and it costs three dollars to shoot, and that just helps pay for targets.
And only your members can participate, though?
How many members will participate in it?
Only your members can participate.
Yeah, well, and, you know, you can bring a guest. You can bring a guest, one or twice a year, something like that.
Right, if, and any, for some event.
No, occasionally, we used to have, but we haven't had enough participation in the club, we used to have, occasionally, we have a turkey shoot, and then it was open, we have somebody out there to gate, to let people in, to, you know, have a turkey shoot. And we've had, through the FFA, and another thing, through the high school, we've had a couple of events where we would have turkey shoots, and we've had a couple other events, too, we have one...
Do that, do that math.
I can't remember a couple, well, two or three of them, actually, we had through the, the...
The money?
Bulldogs, dog. And it's a marine event, where they, they had tricycles converted for kids that didn't have a proper use of their legs, they had tricycles made up where they pelt them with a hand, and they wanted to do turkey shoots, to raise money to buy these things, and then donate them to kids.
Yeah.
And they said, we, you know, they'd like to do it with fifty-fifty percentage, and we said, no.
Let's see that.
And then, everything, everything, and we did two or three of them.
So a family membership of different price?
Right.
Member and spouse, it's ten dollars, it's ten dollars a member and spouse.
So eighty-five.
Yeah.
So then for a kid, if they have more than...
For children, it's five dollars.
Five dollars.
That's, 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 that's one percent.
We have to have insurance on people out there, because that way, if somebody gets hurt or something, we have to have insurance.
So a hundred and five, for a family of fives.
We have a mile.
A hundred and five.
For a family of five, and you have five hundred memberships.
Yeah, right.
Does any member get paid to do any duties out there?
Pardon?
Does any member get paid any money to do any duties?
They're going to do it like that.
Staff.
The staff. Does anybody get paid anything to...
Board members, any? Does it put groceries in the refrigerator?
Pardon?
Does it put groceries in the refrigerator?
I just...
Are you getting paid?
Am I getting paid?
Yes, sir. Is your staff getting paid, that's what they're asking?
I have, I have one person, I pay fifty dollars to mow the ranges, and he's not a board member, he just, I think, a member. And then I have one person, I give him a membership, but we pay him to mow everything, except just the ranges. He mows the field, he mows the cowboy area, and mows sporting plays areas, and he's a, probably, most of you probably know him.
Let me ask you this question.
Yes, sir.
Since we're doing it this way, why don't we, it's our property, we're leasing it to you, why don't we, and you correct me if I'm wrong here, no, okay, I might be out here somewhere, got me back in, why don't we collect the money? Can we collect the money, okay? And, and, and we're talking about what, we don't know what the sewer's doing with the fields and stuff, so we're kind of on a time limit, right, we think, maybe?
Right.
Why don't we collect the money, and we'll pay out, if there's expenses, like the fifty dollars we got to pay for mowing, or something of that nature, that we will pay that.
Okay, it's five hundred dollars to mow the fields and that.
Well, you said it's fifty.
Now, fifty for the ranges, two ranges.
Okay.
Five hundred to mow the rest of the club.
Okay. Well, from my math now, me doing math, if you've got five hundred members at seventy-five dollars, just that alone is thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Now, if I ain't got to mow those ranges but once or twice a month, I'm going to come out ahead. And then on top of that, I know there's some other little expenses, but at this point, I mean, if you've got the ranges and stuff where you need them to be, then, I mean, we...
A lot of money for targets, and, you know, replace a lot of steel targets and stuff like that, and there's insurance for the, for the club property.
Right.
And insurance for the members, and I don't even know... And, uh, insurance for the members, and I don't even know what all the expenses are. My treasurer takes care of that.
Well, I know, that's what I'm saying, but the, the insurance on that is one of the, I mean, I ran martial arts school before, I ran baseball academies before, so you're talking about over a kid, over fifty to a hundred kids a month, and our insurance would run us maybe five hundred dollars a year, maybe, maybe. That's doing martial arts.
It runs us, for the children, it runs us right around six dollars a year.
Right.
And for the adults, it runs us, I, I can't say for sure. I really wouldn't have that much on that.
What, what do you, what do you think, Mr. Landers?
I, I think that what your lease agreement says and what's happening are two completely different things.
Right.
Sound like it.
And so, the council either has to decide, are we going to do go down the road like you're saying, or rewrite it? It's gonna have to be rewritten, one way or the other, um, if you wanna continue with Fort White gun. So, what I would suggest is that you guys allow me to work on, I guess it would probably be an amendment to the original lease, um, with taking into account your position of have it done in such a way that the dues come to the city, you know? And the city is responsible for expenses, um, out there. That's one way to do it, to have a better control over it. And I, I do think, again, you're gonna have to, one thing I don't wanna get lost in the, in the process is, you are gonna have to address the issue of public use. If, if you're going to collect the money from memberships to do the cost, then you're also gonna have to address the issue of, do you have to be a member to?
To go.
To go out there. Because if you say, "No, you don't have to be a member," then no one's gonna pay a membership fee, right? So, now, you're gonna have all the expenses yourself.
Right.
Or, you have to say, if you go out there, you, you might not have to be a member and pay whatever the monthly fee is, but there might be a day use fee or some reasonable, just like if you had a city park, which you had to pay to go in, whatever. So, there's some math that's gonna have to be figured out here, uh, to do this.
I don't wanna just randomly go shoot guns with anybody that pays a fee. I'm sure they do some sort of background check and.
I, I do have a credit card through the club where I get paid, because I make multiple trips. I'm out here five, sometimes six days a week, running out here doing this and doing that, getting cards and stuff like that. So, I have a credit card that I can use some, some of the time.
Do y'all do a background check on your members?
We have a fund where we can, but we don't normally do it.
Well, never mind that.
Interesting.
I mean, mostly, we just bring it up for a vote. If somebody knows.
I've been to a gun range, like in Jacksonville, they did.
Not a range, not a range of a club. Like, we're allowing you to come in here, I'm gonna make sure my family doesn't get killed while we're here.
We used to, when we first started doing it, we had.
Not yesterday, no more.
We ran the sheriff's department, we could call them and say, "Okay, we got somebody that wanna join the club, this is her name," because you run a background, and they would do it for like fifteen dollars or something.
Yeah, and you do it yourself. I know.
What if, what if, what if? What if we did a percentage back to the land, so we ain't gonna, we can stay out of all of that?
You can't, you can't give a big fuck through a nonprofit like that, it'll take money for you.
No, no, but we can charge a lease.
For lease, land?
For lease.
We don't wanna get in the management.
No, that's what I'm saying, I don't think it's worth what, I think we need to charge a lease and that, yeah.
We do, the town does have the liability, according to Lindsey, a potential liability if somebody goes out there and not done background checks, and they go crazy and.
I guess, we gotta move on, we're gonna be here two hours.
We also carry a, a policy where if somebody gets hurt, you're covered, we're covered.
Well, we say that, I've been, yeah, that works so far. Lindsey, no sense, you get right, our attorneys get, they get really good. Why, why, instead of us getting mixed all up into the, just do a, a small lease or something, I mean, a lease, and then say, "You provide us with insurance with this, and, and then we stay out of the, the gun business," you know what I'm saying?
Correct.
I think that's the best way, don't y'all? I mean, now, what would be a fair, uh, lease?
Not a thousand dollars.
Not a thousand?
I, I think that, you know, they're, they're, you're a 501(c) C?
501(c)(7).
Okay.
Almost nobody gets a (c)(3) anymore, having matured.
So, we can look at their historical, uh, budget, and the kind of sure they could provide to us, and.
My treasurer can help you with that.
Absolutely. So, I, I could, I could look at that and get with their treasurer, and then, uh, can you, can you do that for us, get your treasurer to give, Mr. Landers, let's put that together, let this thing work together, and we'll come up with a small fee or a fee that, that'll work for everybody.
Yeah, 'cause I'm, like I said, I've been just making donations every year. Instead of that, we can just give you a fee every year.
Right, right. Well, you can pay it all up at one time, or you can do it monthly, however you wanna do it, but yes, we'll figure, we'll figure it out, we'll do a fee and, and resolve that and do a, do a, do an agreement, okay? Sound good? So, just make sure, like I said, make sure we get with Ms. Connie, or, yeah, just get them, to get in touch, so we can get this, we get this resolved, okay?
Pat and I will finish my.
Pat and I will finish.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you so much, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, um, approval of, Lindsey, approval number five will be approval of agreement with Duke Energy?
Yes, sir, the Duke Energy, um, licensing agreement that we had is, is an older document. It predates you being the mayor, and I'm sure that now Judge Kurbaline had looked it over. I looked it over, I think it was just something that needed to be signed, so I updated it, read it, and moved. I don't have any issues with it, it relates to the use of this building, so it just housekeeping. It needs to be signed by, by you.
Okay. So, is it a hun, is it back a hundred years or what? Did they do it, the last time they did a hundred year or something, didn't they?
Uh, not sure.
It's okay if it, I thought we asked, like, a hundred year lease or something?
I don't recall the years that turned up out of it.
Okay.
They just want us to sign the agreement acknowledging that they own this property, and the transmission line goes through here, they're willing to let us continue to use it, but they're not gonna be liable.
Do we need, do we need a motion for that, or no, just?
Yeah, probably.
Do we need a motion for that, so?
Yeah, are we held to that agreement? Is there a timeframe on it?
No, it's, it's one of the, like, I, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Anybody in government is gonna, is gonna have a, a get out of jail free card within thirty days.
I need a motion, too.
You make a motion to approve the agreement with Duke Energy? The one, the second.
Second, good. All in favor of approving agreement with Duke Energy, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, number five is the one. All right, now, now we'll move to number six, which is, Mr. Landers, also, ad valorem, uh, ad, ad valorem taxes.
Okay, council asked me to look at this issue of possibly enacting a municipal ad valorem tax, um, and I have given you a document before the meeting here that sets out the process by which that is done, um, each year. You have the, you know, copy of that?
I know you handed it to me. I'm sorry. I know I got it, I don't know where I put it.
All right. Statute gives you the authority to enact an ad valorem tax. I have been working on this with Ms. Connie since our last meeting. I have obtained and forwarded to her the budget for the town of Cross City, which is a town somewhat similar size that I also represent. Part of the process is, is creating, um, a, a budget for the town. That's part of the process by which you would, um, determine your proposed millage rate. I believe I said at the last meeting that Cross Cities was four point nine, although that's actually their rollback rate. Their, their actual millage that's on the books right now is five. So, what we would need to do this year would be the year of enacting it, creating it, I would need to work with the tax collector, property appraiser, et cetera, here in county, to make that assessment, uh, beginning January first of next year. They would assess the assessed value, not the adjusted value or market value, but the assessed value of residential and commercial properties here in the town limit, um, and assess the tax based on what we vote in as our proposed millage rate. And then, as you see here, there is a timeline over the, over the months of how it goes. So, and it's the same that you get every year of your tax, your county taxes, the same notices that go out. They'll include next year, if we go through this process, the addition of the municipal ad valorem tax. And so, yeah, it's just, it's a process. And so, I would just need y'all's approval, and you should probably vote to approve, to begin that process, which means that it won't be enacted tonight, but the process of enacting would begin tonight.
What is this mill rate? Explain that to me.
Uh, I don't know, they use odd terms. Millage rate is one dollar per thousand dollars of assessed value. So, for every thousand dollars of assessed value of real property, residential or commercial, the tax rate would be one dollar for each thousand. And so, if you have, uh, four mills, I'm just making, using that number, so, four dollars for every thousand dollars of assessed value would be your municipal ad valorem tax. So, it's pretty easy to do the math.
So, four mills and a hundred thousand dollars, say taxable property value, it'd be four hundred dollars.
Correct.
Okay, so, okay, I got that right. Okay, right.
So, I believe Ms. Connie had, had gotten with the property appraiser on the value, I said the value, the current assessed value of, of properties within the town of Fort White, and then, if you could look at that and say, "Okay, well, there, this is, this is the number, the total number, so if we charged three mills, four mills, five mills, et cetera," you would know how much money we would bring in when everyone pays their taxes. And again, part of, part of the process is building a budget to say, "Here's what we, here's what we're trying to do, here's what we're gonna use these, you know, use this money for." And you sort of work backwards and to decide on what your millage rate should be.
If, if you, if the board, if we say we did three mills, is it like water rates, you can change it?
Yes.
So, it can change your.
It can change, yes.
Now, does that take the three meetings to do so? And they're like two or three meetings?
Yeah, there, there, yeah, there's a process in there.
Right, so, anytime you play with this number, it's gonna take that process again.
Right. Not the entire process, but the process of public notice, hey, we're gonna, there's gonna be a change in your taxes and the advertising, and, and so, you see, like with, and where the rollback rate comes from, you say, "Okay, well, we, we could charge, we're authorized to charge this amount, but our budget reflects a smaller amount, and so, we're charging a lesser amount."
Just to give you an idea, um, right now, the approximate assessed value of the properties in the town of Fort White is right at thirty-nine million dollars. So, if you had a millage of four point nine, just pick one out of the air, that would generate right at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the town.
So, that would be your budget?
Yeah.
And then, you would justify it, I'd say, and we're gonna use the hundred.
And so, how are we finding our budget? You and the town, you're finding that budget together, or?
I am a mechanic for a budget. I will not be doing it.
There are, there are things that we need to do as a town to continue to support the growth that's coming. Our current budget is, is, uh, okay right now, um, but you can just about figure out that there's gonna be a lot of things coming down the pipe as, once we get sewer and water, that the growth is gonna happen, that we're gonna need. And one of them conceivably could be our own code enforcement department.
So, how are we gonna forecast that?
Our only, you know, pardon me?
How are we gonna forecast that? Is what I'm getting at, I guess.
What do you mean, how are we gonna forecast?
How you gonna do that now and know how much you need later?
But the council would have to decide what your priorities are.
We would do.
And then, we'd have to go in, we'd have to develop pro forma budgets to get an idea. Y'all would have to decide what you feel is a pressing thing that the town needs in order to prioritize.
And that's, that's why I gave you guys the, the, uh, the Cross City budget.
Cross City, right.
Because you could look at their budget and say, "Okay, there's fifty-hundred dollars for these things, oh, that makes sense." Some of them won't, they have a police force, you don't have a police force. Uh, but a lot of the things you could look at and say, "Okay, well, that makes sense, these are things we ought to build into our budget." Another resource that I would suggest is whoever does our auditing, um, all of these guys who do municipal auditing, they're auditing budgets, right? So, they're looking, so they're a good resource for looking at things, um, to do. What you're doing is, is a, actually, pretty, pretty unique thing, doing it for the first time, you know? Most folks who are sitting at these tables, there's already been an ad valorem.
Well, you say that, when I've been to that, no, the mayors or other people in other towns, they go, "Y'all don't have an ad valorem tax?"
Absolutely.
Are y'all idiots? I've had it say to me a thousand times, I'm going.
I haven't found one yet that doesn't have one, so, I'm sure there are.
Just like, just like, you know, if, if we have equipment right now, right now, we have to scramble.
Oh, yeah. And that's the thing, guys.
We can't improve our ball fields, we can't add recreation playground equipment, there's something on there.
That's the thing, and we had ad valorem tax going around, about sixty thousand dollars, but hey, let's just pay it, be done with it, since we, we got the money, that's what it's used for, is while we played it, so. That's the thing, is that the citizens has to understand, that's why Fort White, for so many years, have been ran from nickels and dimes. I mean, we don't, I know you said we're okay on the budget, we're not okay. When I say not okay, we might have, we might end up with seven, eight thousand dollars for the year. That's not okay.
No, so.
So, what I'm saying is that.
Well, we're not going in behind.
No, we're not going in negative, no, we're not going in negative, but there's things that we need. Our guy, a percentage of guys have to do jobs with a chainsaw and a rake. Like, you know, we're, we're living back in the horse and buck, I mean, seriously, I mean, it's, it's crazy.
We need a bucket truck. We need, I mean, there's, I mean, I could just go a list from here to that wall.
Yeah, that's what, you know, and, that's what communities do, they pull together and they.
Move with it.
Yeah, I mean, so. So, we just need them.
We need a meeting room that we can meet in.
Sure. Well, we're hoping that the fort's gonna be that, you know, so.
Right, but that's gonna take money to redo, and, you know.
Well, we hope all that comes together, so.
I'll make a moment, turn it out, and allow Lindsey Landers to continue to add more.
Well, I'll get us on top of the county tax.
Yes, sir, it's in addition to.
Let me ask you a question. Do we need to, did we need a millage rate?
No, sir.
No.
Not.
No, too.
Pursue, okay.
We need, we need to determine first what a reasonable budget would be for the town of Fort White, and then we determine what the millage rate.
So, you, so you just made a.
I did.
A motion to allow Mr. Landers.
Lindsey Landers, to proceed forward.
Yes, sir.
Do you need a second?
Say.
All right, so we got a second on the board, so, basically, all in favor of Mr. Landers proceeding forward with the ad valorem tax, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, good deal.
That's all I have.
That's all you need, right, Mr. Landers?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right.
You're next.
Right, all right, me, I'm next, Fort White Cemetery issues. Guys, we have Ms. Connie, and you probably can go in a little bit more detail with Ms. Connie than I can. Guys, we have Ms. Connie, and you probably can go in a little bit more detail with Connie than I can. We have several incidents where, um, our, and Bill, you, you know about this too. Where we have, uh, I guess our older citizens here in town, I guess way back when, I don't know when it all happened, but there was, I don't know what, what mayor did it, but somebody gave sites away. Gave sites away. What we're finding is, is that it's not just a couple sites, people are coming now and going, oh, no, we had 18 sites. Or plots, it's plots. So we're running into that issue, so where do y'all want us to go when they come up here? And we have no record of, you know, a lot of people, they will, oh.
That's, that's not.
They were told to go to the cemetery and stake out their area.
Yeah.
In some places.
That's the way it was.
Yeah.
In some, in some instances, there are cement markers in the corners.
I know my family went and put cement markers in.
Come up here and turn them in, right, now there's no record of it.
Yeah, there's no record.
There's no record.
But there's also, and, and everybody sitting here and saying, when they come to the Fort White Cemetery, the old part of it, they say there's no more available spots.
Right.
But nobody gave paperwork.
The people that saying they have it, they don't have.
No, 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 Fort White has said there's no more.
Yeah, we don't have a paperwork.
In the old spot, not the new spot. In the old spot, there's no, there's no more available spots, both supposedly.
So we know Fort White don't have.
Fort White don't have.
Well, there are still spots out there to be buried, but there's, there's spots out there to be buried in, but there's people that said that they offload spots.
Right, we may have any records.
No, nobody had, Fort White's supposed to have it.
There's nothing.
Well, no, all they, all Fort White had was is a notebook piece of paper with their name written on it. That's basically what, is what we were told. But I've never seen that piece of paper since I've been.
How we've been handling it is if someone can show reasonable intent, by that I mean the cement markers in the corners, that they wouldn't just. I know, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, some, when they come, if they have cement markers or if there are headstones and there are blanks, like say, there's a husband and a wife, and the husband's buried, but the wife's not, et cetera. And there is a lot of area around it, um, and they're claiming they have, they'll have like, one can be buried here, another one can be buried here, another one can be buried here. Well, that lends itself to believe that they have that square, you know, of, of plots. So, but the problem is, is they have nothing to show.
Was people paying for these?
No.
No, it was, it was, uh.
So Fort White does, we're free.
Well, now the new one, now, now you pay.
Right, yeah.
The old one, back in the day, no label was free, you claimed it.
And the problem that we have is that if, let's just say you have a daughter that lives in Michigan, and mom is buried here, okay? Daughter passes away and the family wants daughter buried next to mom. We don't know if somebody's already buried there, we don't know anything. It's, it's so we've had a real problem.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That, that was showing up as.
I know a lot of families, there was two spots because of this.
Really?
And they're not happy.
Oh, I guarantee it, I wouldn't be either.
Who was it?
Uh, the, uh, Cherry, Cherry mom and them.
Oh, yeah, that's what, that's, see, that brought that up. I know Mr. Sparkman, uh, called me, or Ms. Sparkman called me.
Yeah, that was another.
Well, he was upset because the mayor, uh, John Sparkman got, uh, he, he passed away and they buried him up there. But they, and his son wasn't upset at all.
No.
He didn't understand what was going on, so he, I called him and personally talked to him, but he bought a spot. Well, then when he called and relayed the message to Ms. Sparkman, she got all anxious. She, she said, why'd you buy a spot? We have spots. Well, then, here's another thing, she said that it should, he was the mayor here, so he should have been buried for free anyway. So that's not in the charter. That's, I, I don't get married and buried for free, I mean, just goes on the mayor, don't mean this, nobody written that in the charter.
I read through the ordinances and there's not anything regarding.
Yeah, so, but that, that brought up the issue about the spot. They, they felt like they had a spot up there that, she said, well, y'all, he could have just took one of my spots.
Well.
So then, so that's what.
It was a family Sparkman's spot. There's.
Possession.
Right.
There's nothing in writing now, I've, I've, nobody, there is a family Sparkman's spot, just like.
How many more spots?
There's a new spot, there's a Coon's spot.
How many more, how many spots?
I'll dig somebody up, they pair somebody and put them up like that.
It's going to be.
I don't know what will happen. You must put one in that spot.
Look, but there's.
We'll move them.
How many problems is there?
There, there's a bunch. I mean, right now, potentially there's a bunch of problems because there's a bunch empty spots that people claim.
Is there empty spots in those locations or?
Yes.
So, well, I mean.
And it's going to continue to be a problem.
Recently brought it up, we got to do something about it.
Right.
Once.
Yeah, I mean, something's got to be.
People come in and they'll say.
Less each generation, like your family.
That's right.
Your parents had spots for all of you.
That's right.
And then whenever you had kids, you get spots for your kids.
No, I ain't got no spots.
And then, well, I'm saying the process of, well, I think we have a side in China when we got 10 spots for my brother, my sister, and me.
All right.
And then we each have a spot for our spouses. Then after that, you know, if I have a spot, if I have kids, I find spots in my family's area. However, none of that matters.
I just want to know what y'all want to handle this, I, I, we, Ms. Connie's keeps getting.
So if there's no record of them, and they were not paid for, is it, can we charge them for it like we're doing now? A new area, a new park, or whatever, let them keep the spot, but then they just got to pay.
Right.
I agree with you.
Because you can't charge one person and not the next, I mean, it puts us in a bad place. It puts us in a really bad position here in town hall. And especially, I don't know the families and I don't know the heritage.
The certificates.
If they're resident, it's 500.
Okay, if they're not.
It's 1,500 if they're from out of the county.
Well, even if you want to be buried by your family, that's what.
Now you get, you get a certi, now you get a certificate now when you, you get a certificate. I want to say, they, and that was the craziest thing when I first, I said, yeah, we're not giving out certificates.
We can't help what's happened before.
Right.
That's not our problem, they getting at us all like, it stinks. However, where do you want to lay the rest? Right, Ms. Mary?
I mean, I don't, I don't. It's a touchy subject, man, I'm telling you.
The way you look at it.
It's a touchy subject.
You're going to meet some mean people, yeah, surely.
It's a touchy subject.
I think if the, if the plots are marked off, they ought to have a spot. If they're not, where you can't tell who's who, because there is stones out there that says, this spot belongs to this group.
So you got X amount of spots in that?
And there's certain, there's not like that.
Yeah, you can tell where some of them.
I mean, we need to look at this before y'all decide.
Yeah. That's what I was all about. There's some of, some of them is marked off, there are some marked off.
I mean, if this is where it makes sense, but, I mean. You can't say I bought this 20 years ago from a great, great granddaughter.
Right. I get it, I mean, I.
You take your spot away, I guess, but I don't know.
Yeah, no, it's, that's what I'm telling you.
Oh, we have people fighting for spots.
Right, I agree with that.
And if it makes sense, we're, you know, it's legit, I mean, everybody knows.
If somebody is doing, some of them don't.
Right.
The problem is, uh, we're putting responsibility off on Connie, and it ain't her responsibility to make that decision. I'm saying, because now, now she's going to be the bad guy, you know what I'm saying? That's what's so bad about this, is we're not always here.
We got to have a solution, but we can't have, but we need to look at it, we don't just need to decide around.
Well, it's a prior.
That's fine.
Well, I know, but if it don't make sense, then she says it don't make sense, then she charges them, then they get mad, then you see, so it's putting her in a bad position.
But if we decide, then we're not putting her in the spot. This is what they, this is what the board says goes.
What do you think is a good idea?
I, I, I don't know the complete solution right now. That's why I'm saying we don't need to be hasty and decide to die without going around and looking.
And they, they have a family member that is passed, they're not going to wait till the next board meeting.
Right.
True.
And here's another thing, we can't all go around and together meet, so we can do it one at a time, and then we got to come back here and talk about it.
Somebody's got to take pictures of what's there too, that sounds creepy, right? The buster, you know, got out there and.
Want you to, uh, what, a little small committee to look at this and decide.
I wish we had a cemetery.
Not decide, play it back to the board and let the board decide.
Let's look, let's, let's, put it on next, next meeting, Ms. Connie. Guys, if y'all can't go out there in the meantime and go look at that, look at it, and y'all.
I highly recommend that you have Buster good with you because he can show you.
Yes, yes.
Buster can show you.
Well, I just want to be fair to, like you said, be fair to the ones that, that, that did, because I, my, my family's one of them too. I mean, uh, Ms. Cook, she's, she's got a, a site out there now left. I know she's got one, I think beside her, uh, Ms. Cook, dog.
But they have headstones up.
Well, they do have headstones up, that is got bruised, so, yeah.
There you go.
I got an aunt that don't have a headstone up, that I guarantee you, that's got a problem for her.
But there's a, that she's got, y'all got.
Well, I know Joanne, I know the D side, the Coon's side tomorrow.
Okay.
The D side don't, I don't know if they got her or not, but I know Joanne, you know Joanne?
Yeah.
Okay, she's in a home over there right now.
Right.
And, uh, I know she got a spot beside grandma.
Yeah, I see.
That, that I'm good for sure that they've had those spots.
It's just a very touchy subject, I mean, it's, yeah.
Back then, they did beat them out.
Right.
But some of them was marked off and some of them not.
Well, we got to figure.
And I got, I got this. So if, even if, I'm just saying, if when Joanne passes and there is a spot there that's supposed to be laid with her, she gets buried there for nothing?
Well, I hope everybody been buried there for nothing.
Yeah, back then, before.
My mom got buried two years ago for nothing.
I'm saying, but, yeah, it's been a problem, I mean, it's been a problem. But, you know, because we had, we had to fish that out, out at the cemetery up there. And, and I mean, just like you're saying, what's right for one is, it's got to be right for the other.
That's right.
I mean, I, um.
There aren't any family plot, uh, reservations at Heavenly Rest.
No, that's what I'm saying, I mean, yeah, we want to be buried with our, with our family members.
Right.
Like, for instance, I've already purchased mine in Glens, but it's paid for. Now, if I decide that one, if one of my kids die and I want to put them there, still, I mean, it's paid for, but it's not, I mean, I can't just say, if I hadn't per, if I hadn't purchased that spot, and somebody, he might want to put somebody out there. And, hey, if he gonna pay for it, that's, that's way.
That's right.
You know, I mean, I'm, it's just.
No, it's, I, we done been down this road one time before, and it, and I, it keeps coming up, and it keeps coming up.
Well, and previously.
Calling the crossfire.
And previously, I broached this subject with Chuck Overline, and his recommendation was the same as our current attorney, that unless they can produce some sort of document showing that they have indeed paid for the spot, that they need to pay.
I just don't know why in the world somebody would, years ago, just went up to here, pick, pick the T N O. Pick the T N O.
Just like everything else, we need to.
I have people who are signed by Edmund Hudson.
Well, you, this is the type of stuff that we receive. We got. The cemetery? I'm trying to the cemetery. Three, three hundred. I want a full lot, I love.
Wow, do you say 300?
I mean.
Yeah, 300. All right, we're going to, guys, let's go, we got, we got, we're going to be here all night if we ain't careful.
So table that to the next.
Table it to the next meeting, well, everybody, please go visit the cemetery, and you'll see. I know what you're talking about, and, and I, I just want to go look at different sites and see who's got their stuff marked that way. Because like I said, even when we make our decision, let's say it's the Sparkmans, okay, they got their stuff marked. Let's say it's the Coons, they got their stuff marked, okay, let's say that, um, the, the old town, what, um.
Do you have lots of, uh?
Who?
The town.
You know, you talk.
Yeah, she's got her stuff marked, yeah, she's got her stuff marked.
All we have is.
So what I'm saying is that you're still going to have more to pop up, and we didn't see where the zone, you know, or, you know, you don't say it's going to come up.
We just did that.
It still will come up, all right, it's great. I've been dealing with the cemetery, they've been six years now, and it's just, and it's a very sensitive subject.
It is.
Two years.
All right, Ms. Connie?
Yeah, they go out and they can tell.
So will y'all go to the cemetery from now next meeting?
So she said there's no plots out there on paper, how it's laid out.
No.
At all, so how do you do that?
It's, excuse me, in most places, it's all gridded out.
Right, exactly.
Well, it is, and that's, that, that.
Fort White had.
If you only knew what.
Well, the bad thing is, Fort White had it one time.
Yeah, it's disappeared.
I don't know.
I'm a Sparkman.
Yeah.
I'm a Sparkman.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we, we have.
Most places are gridded out, and say, if you have two plots in this grid, and then Billy Bob dies, he can't be in there, there has to be so much space between the gridded areas, and those grids are sold way in advance.
But the problem is, is that that cemetery and Heavenly Rest Cemetery was not gridded out.
Well, that needs, what you have now needs to be grandfathered in, and all that, what I call the new part over there by the high school, needs to be gridded.
Well, that, no, it is, it, it is.
The new part is.
The new part is.
And I see, I think about dogs.
Yeah, it's kind of, it, it, it bewildered me when I found out how they were running this up here when I took over. I was like, you can't, how are y'all setting them? I mean, just, put them over there. You can't just put them over there, they got to be agreed with that. Like, to be buried.
I'm going to get something old for a while, but I know, like Tom, he took care of grandma's spot. How they come up with what they come up with?
Find out.
Give me a little bit, give me a little bit.
Well, I have a situation right now where the ex-town clerk is demanding that she has this spot over here, but Edmund Hudson has signed paperwork giving it to somebody else. And she is constantly harassing me about it.
That's the one I was just talking about, because two spots right there, you can look at them and tell that it should have been their spots.
But the paperwork says differently.
The paperwork does say.
What paperwork? Y'all said, I got a paperwork.
Uh, for that particular spot, there is.
I don't understand that, then.
And there are no records. In fact, the ex-town clerk, I caught her in here not too long ago in that door right there, looking for cemetery records.
Yeah, she can't, she can't do that.
And she said, well, we need caution, so they know.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, um, and I've never seen it. Well, even when I took over, she handed me a group of papers when I walked in here. It looked like you took this whole damn, just mixed it all up real quick and said, here. I went, what's this? She says, everything you'll need. I went, all right, so I went on, went through every, but it was nothing, it was, it wasn't, it was just, it was nothing, it was no cemetery stuff. No, 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 it was no, I brought it back up, and I handed it back to her, so I didn't see what I needed. All right, let's go, Ms. Connie, we got to go.
All right, table till next meeting. Uh, the next item, number eight, is request approval of resolution number 2023-38. Uh, this is the fifth amendment to the loan agreement with the State of Florida and Department of Environmental Protection, providing for the rescheduling of the project planning activities and loan payments, and providing for an effective date. This is from the sewer feasibility study that was done, where we got a grant for $12,500, and we got a loan for $12,500. And this is just basically a resolution and an amendment to the agreement, because they haven't closed out, the feasibility study, of course, has been done, it just hasn't been closed out yet, and they are going to extend the payments to begin in February. The first payment of $438 is a semi-annual loan payment, and that will start February 15th of 2024.
That we owe?
Yes. Until we pay back $12,500.
I thought you said that they grant, we got a grant, and then.
We got a grant for 12,500, and a loan for 12,500. The study was 25,000.
Okay, got you, okay, I was thinking that one paid off, okay, got you, guys, I do remember, I do remember.
And the reason that they did this is because of COVID. That's the only reason that this has been delayed.
Okay.
They're just cleaning, they're just doing paperwork.
Does it need a motion to approve it?
Make a motion to approve the, um, request approval of resolution R twenty, twenty-three dash thirty-eight, fifth.
I'll say.
Good, all in favor of approving the resolution R twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight, fifth, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, good deal.
The next on the agenda is, uh, request approval of the amendment to the traffic signal compensation agreement for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. As you know, this money comes from DOT, and what it does is it, uh, reimburses us for any maintenance and electricity that we are responsible for, for the flashing, school flashers, and the traffic signal. Um, this money goes, once we get it, it's a wash because we give it to the county.
I was going to say about the, yeah, about the county.
They maintain our, um, traffic.
All right, good.
It's just the paperwork to approve the amendment for the following year.
I have a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the amendment to the traffic signal maintenance and compensation agreement for the twenty-three, twenty-four.
Say.
Good, all in favor of approval, uh, approval amendment to traffic signal maintenance and compensation agreement twenty-three, twenty-four, say aye? All opposed, say nay. All right, good deal.
Next is the state highway lighting maintenance and compensation agreement. This is for the lights, the tra, uh, streetlights.
Streetlights, streetlights.
The streetlights, that is correct. Um, we will receive fourteen thousand one hundred dollars and fifty-six cents for forty-three, for forty-three, um.
Lights.
Streetlights. Yes, because we have to, uh, pay the electric bill.
Well, the county maintains that too?
No. So the electric company's.
Oh, yeah, we just paid an electricity bill, we compensate us to pay electricity bills. So we got a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the amendment to the street lighting maintenance and compensation agreement for the twenty-three, twenty-four.
Say.
Good, all in favor of, uh, approval amendment for street lighting and maintenance and compensation agreement for twenty-three, twenty-four, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Yeah, I should have approved it, I should have.
Next, next is the approval of an engagement letter to, um, engage the CPA firm of Powell and Jones to perform our annual audit.
They usually want to do it all anyway, right? They do, they do it every year?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yeah.
This is just the engagement letter without, we're giving them permission to do it. Uh, last year, I believe, the fee was six thousand dollars.
So you approve a motion?
Make a motion to approve the engagement letter for, um, Powell and Jones to do the CPAs.
Say. Good, all in favor of appro, approval of engagement letter to Powell and Jones, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All right, approve.
Next, um, you have these spreadsheets that I gave you that shows where we stand with our grants. Um, I don't know if you've had a chance to go over them or not, but I get questions from time to time, so I did these spreadsheets so y'all could have the numbers in front of you. Basically, the A A R P funding monies, which is COVID money, we received three hundred thousand five hundred and twelve dollars. We have a balance remaining of one twenty-five that, uh, we will need to utilize for infrastructure. That's on the spreadsheet. At the top, it says A A R P funding, three hundred thousand five hundred and twelve dollars.
Four reasons for what?
And it lists what it's been spent on, pardon me?
I'm sorry, you answered the question.
It lists what it's been spent on, and it's been spent on, uh, the utility.
That's, that's the money, okay, that's the money, that, that was that.
COVID money.
COVID money, yes, yes, okay, gotcha.
Yes.
And all the rest is, is, all the rest is that water line project and, and, uh.
Yes, we've got, these are all grants. We've got the one million dollar water line project, we've got the five point three three seven sewer project, and we've got the, um, sewer feasibility study, which we just approved the, um, closeout of. And we've got the water project, which is.
I like these, they're pretty cool, okay, you did a good job with them, I like these. So now, so then the date, does it show us where we've been reimb, well, does it show?
Hold on, say now.
Yes.
Reimburse.
You can forget about the water loop project, that's done, the sewer, the water loop project basically is done.
The water line project?
No.
Loop.
A water loop?
And the sewer feasibility study, we still owe, um, we still owe twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. All right, water loop project, that's done.
That's done.
And we're zeroed out on that thing?
We're zeroed out.
Okay, so zeroed out, okay, good.
Our money, we still have one hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred to spend.
I've seen that, okay.
Then the sewer feasibility study, I just told you about that. We still owe our Florida Professional Services twenty-five hundred dollars on that, which they have submitted a billboard here recently. Um, the water loop, I mean, excuse me, water line project was for one million dollars. We have spent nine hundred.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We've spent nine hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars, and we've only been reimbursed the seven fifty-six. So we've got two hundred, a little over two hundred thousand dollars outstanding that has been submitted for reimbursement, and I'm just waiting on the checks.
Do your, okay, good deal.
Yep.
Awesome. I like these things, yeah, keep it, I like that.
Then the sewer project, uh, is five point three million, we've spent two seventy-two, four eighty-nine, and I've been reimbursed two twelve. So I've got about fifty, sixty thousand dollars outstanding on that that have been submitted.
Got you.
So we got about two seventy-five outstanding in monies that.
Just coming back.
That's coming back.
Coming back, okay, cool.
That's coming back.
Like it, good.
Okay. Um, the next on the agenda, um, I don't know if y'all have, have met Nicole, that works here. She, um, is very involved because she lives in White Springs, but they've done in the past, uh, breakfast with Santa. You can see the flyer that has included in here. Um, she is, has asked that we do that here on December the ninth. She, um, has boxes and boxes of Bombas socks to give away that are in that bathroom back there. Um, she's going to get at Dollar General, and she's done this before, so she knows she can do it. Cal Man Foods will donate all the eggs. Um, she'll get, um, bacon from Nettles. She'll get, um, toys from Dollar General and places like that, and I know a guy that does, dresses up like the Grinch, and he'll come, and that kind of thing. So we want the board's permission to have a breakfast with Santa, um, on the December ninth from nine to twelve at the community center.
We have a Santa right here. You're a bill, y'all nominated.
She has a Santa person.
Oh, does she? Okay, good, okay. So I just need a board approval or motion?
We just need board approval, yes.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the breakfast with Santa on December ninth.
Say. Good, uh, all in favor of breakfast with Santa on December ninth, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All right, good deal.
And last but not least, our yard sale. We already got people asking when the fall yard sale is going to be. Um, just so you know, this last yard sale, we went the whole twenty-eight dollars.
All right.
What, how's the yard sale?
You know, we did not have many as many people sign up for this.
No, we didn't, it was.
As we did in the fall. We had.
Actually, not even business.
Yeah, we, uh, had way more than that.
Did you get anything?
You bought a what?
Ten dollar something, I don't know. About one dollar something, I got a ten dollar. They never wanted to miss out on my.
They were perfect.
Anyway, we spent, we spent a hundred and fifty on signs, we spent eighty on posts, uh, twenty-five on cable ties, and a hundred and sixty-five on a quarter john, and we took in three hundred and ninety dollars.
But the signs, we can just change the date, right?
Yes.
We can use those again.
Yes.
Yes.
We'll be making money next time.
Is there a better location we can do besides the.
That's the safest, that's the safest. They used to go right here where the train depot's at and all, but highway, man, people walk into it on the highway.
Well, uh, you know, I was, thank you back, whenever we were younger, David and I, when we had the fall festivals and stuff.
Yeah, at middle school, we had at middle school.
Remember, they'd have all that right there, which I know times has changed, but man, that'd be.
That's what we had to start doing. Lot of yard sale with a fall festival.
Yes. The school is very, very stingy.
Yeah, but we could do it, we could utilize the ball field up there and do a fall festival when it's cool, when it's cool, huh?
Got eighty acres right there.
Yeah.
We could work out with them.
Where's that?
The gun range. I mean.
Well, let me ask y'all this question. If you're going down, listen, I thought about this other day. If you're going down, um, let me find myself here real quick. If you're, is it, what side road it runs beside the, if you're coming off twenty-seven, back and left at, by the apartments, uh, the ones that the Ace guy used to own. The one David involved.
The end of Dorch.
Dorch, is that Dorch?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Dorch Street.
Why can't we, in the fall, close them Dorch streets and stuff? Not the main twenty-seven, but close them side streets off and set up a fall festival in them streets?
Even, you know.
The field is so much better, though, because you've got parking.
I don't know. I just like people walking down the streets and stuff, makes it feel more.
It does, you know, big people show up for that.
And getting huge yards.
I have a building, I know, that's what I'm saying.
You wouldn't have, uh, the first year, if you advertised it right, you wouldn't have enough parking.
That's what we want.
Yeah, and then.
You wouldn't have enough parking.
You can have some, some side streets like we used to, and then around the ball field, cemetery, I mean, for football, like the football game.
And they'll have.
I just want to bring a.
Yeah, I was trying to say.
I want to bring a big festival.
We can put that on the, right, or now, like, put on the fall festival again.
I think it'd be fun. I used to have a ball when I was a kid, the fall festival.
Bring everybody together.
They need a little variety there, they need.
Well, you know, um, you know, they did one in Dee's Park for a couple of years, remember the, the girls that came and did it, and they got all kinds of donations from different people, and they have the trick or treat stations.
Well, you could.
They did the trunk or treat is what they did.
If you can get the community involved in it, they can set up at different sites, they can have something set up at D Square, have some set up down it, have different areas where different stuff's in it.
The ball field here.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a lot of space.
Yeah.
Anyways, yeah. And that's good, so, I mean.
Yeah, we need to work with that.
So you want to not have the yard sale set for October seventh and concentrate on.
No, I still, I still say do a yard sale, you do a yard sale on October seventh, we can move forward with that, but also let's concentrate on a, on a.
Have a fall festival, not in conjunction with the.
No, no.
Okay, in, in addition to.
Yeah, so I already know where the problem is.
Okay.
Or you know October.
Well, I tell you, who loves to do stuff like that?
Do a trunk or treat, you go.
Well, see, we had a fall festival and then had, was the haunted house there at the same time, too?
Yeah. It was, it was, that was a ball, man.
Who did that?
The school.
All the parents.
School.
My parents, I put it on, it was, I'm back in the PTA.
Yeah.
That's back when, that's back when the community was a community, you know what I'm saying, everybody had fun.
But you know, we haven't included the high school in very much at all, and I think that would be a good thing to get FFA involved in it. They come here for money, they can help us doing that, the drama club, different place, different things like that with the high school.
Yeah, I like it, I like it, I like it. All right, garbage, garbage, grave, number fifteen.
Yes, number fifteen, the garbage assessment. Um, we got notice from, and I wish David was here, but anyway, Waste Pro has informed the county that there is going to be a forty percent increase. A forty percent increase. That means that our tipping fees are going to go from fifty thousand dollars to seventy thousand dollars. Therefore, we're going to have to have a forty-nine dollar and fifteen cent increase on our garbage. Um, it'll go from, we're right now at three fifteen eighty-five a year, and it'll need to go to three sixty-five, which works out to be thirty dollars and forty-two cents a month.
Now, is that for sure, one hundred percent going to happen?
Yes, yes.
Wow.
So the reason I'm bringing this up is because I've got to get these numbers to, uh, neighbors and givlings. They're the ones that, uh, take care of the assessment, and the, uh, first, uh, resolution for the, for the assessment will be on the July meeting.
So what we have to, what we need, we need to talk about?
Nothing right now, I'm just letting you know, I'm just letting you know what, what.
You said on the July meeting, so remember, I said, I wanted, I wanted to bring.
Is it mandatory, I'm just, not talking, we'll talk virtually, but is it mandatory now?
Yes. Nope, every property owner in Fort White gets assessed, and then the commercial pay Waste Pro directly.
So I can't say I don't want you picking up my garbage?
No.
I'll tell you the trap.
You can say that, but you still paying.
Miss Connie, did you, I'm not here July now, so do we want to try to move that meeting up or back or?
Um, are you going to be gone the whole month of July?
Where you going?
Well, I say, well, it depends on. The fifth, now, I might be here through the fifth and the ninth, but we're playing ball at State in Lake City, if, if, well, I know we're here for that. Now, we get beat out, we're gone. So, and then if we do win that, then I might be back on the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, because we'll be going to North Carolina, and be there by the twenty-eighth to play for regionals.
Mary?
So.
Well, our meeting would normally be on July the seventeenth.
I would definitely be gone till the seventeenth.
July the seventeenth would be our meeting. So you want, you said the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh you'd be here?
I'll be trapped, well, I'll be back from the Keys, but I don't know if I'll be, I don't know, I don't know yet, I don't know. I, I don't want to give you a definite and may not be here, because if we lose and we don't go to regionals, no, I'll be there till the first.
Well, the only thing, we could have the meeting, but if there's a vote and it's a tie, then we have a problem.
Right. So, that's what I'm saying, y'all want, do, do you want to push one off to August, not, the early August, have a meeting?
We could have it early, well, let's see.
Or maybe have it early July?
Well, what we could do is, we could have a, there's one, two, there's five Tuesdays in August. Uh, if push came to shove, you could do one in the beginning of August, and then your normal one would be on the twenty-first of August.
Two weeks later. Just have a July off?
Yeah. That would be three weeks between the first.
Can we do that?
The August first and.
Okay, yeah, you should just have one meeting, you only have to have one meeting a month. You said only have to have one meeting? What if you don't have one one month, though? Oh, you have to have a meeting, yeah. You have to have one meeting a month. So you have to have one July?
In the calendar month.
Correct. So you have to have a July, so we can't skip July.
No.
Do the meeting and table whatever we can't vote on.
Yeah, she got it.
So July seventeen. But now, but now, remember, but now, remember, you just told me to table the cemetery stuff until this meeting, so that's going to present a problem.
Put you there in August. But no, but that, but that, well, hopefully won't present a problem, hopefully that worked out. I got to try, I got to trust you guys, y'all worked out. I'm not here at cemetery, so, I mean, I mean, it's. I think everybody's in agreeance that, I mean, something's got to be done, something's got to be done, we just got to figure out what's right for the people.
So once you just check your schedule, we'll figure it out when we got the, on the meeting bumping, if there's nothing pressing, then we have the meeting and.
Tab, table, if something comes up and y'all can't all agree on it, we'll table it, and I'll be back, so.
But if you back, you, you, you.
I'll be here, if I'm back, yeah, I'll be here.
Stop him.
No, I, I'm.
We're meeting July seventeenth.
July seventeenth, yeah, and then if I'm back.
He'll be here, they're going to get the crap beat out of him.
No.
Oh, I'm going to do my bake box. I think David went up there, they showed them what was up in Missouri.
Yeah, they.
I think so.
Got to tell them.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, they.
Yeah, they got a lot of talk with them, bud.
They, they.